Good evening, everyone. Good to see you tonight, all of you. I'm excited about tonight. I'm excited about what we're gonna be talking tonight. So let's start gathering and getting our seats and let's pray to start worshiping. Father, we know you are good. We're here because of your goodness. We don't deserve to be here, but you have chosen and allowed us to be here. We're so thankful for what you are doing in our lives. We're so thankful for what you are doing in our community, in our body. I pray, Lord, that... I pray, Lord, that you will continue healing us, healing our hearts, allowing us to rest in you. I pray that you will reassure us in who is with us. We know that all things are possible in your name and we're trusting that, Lord. We wanna worship you today. We wanna exalt your name because of who you are and because of what you are going to do. Be exalted in Jesus' name. Amen.
Wherever you at, would you join and stand as we worship a good God who's worthy of the glory and the honor and the praise? His name is Jesus. Yes, Jesus, we honor you, Jesus. We exalt you, Jesus. We glorify your name. Oh, we glorify your name. We glorify your name. You were the word at the beginning, one we've caught the Lord most high. Your hidden glory in creation, now revealed in you are Christ. What a beautiful name it is. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a beautiful name it is. And nothing compares to this. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus. Come on, we all sing this united today. You didn't want heaven without us. So Jesus, you brought heaven down. My sin was greater, your love was greater. And what could separate us now? What a wonderful name it is. And what a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. And what a wonderful name it is. And nothing compares to this. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus. And what a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus. Oh, such a wonderful name. Such a wonderful name. The name that delivers. The name that sets us free. The name that saves us. The name that frees us. Oh, the name of Jesus. And oh, the name of Jesus, yes. We see that death could not hold you. The veil tore before you. You silenced the boughs of sin and grave. The heavens are roaring. The praise of your glory. And for you are raised to life again. You have, and you have no rival. And you have no equal. And now and forever, God, you reign. And yours is the kingdom. And yours is the glory. And yours is the name above all. Come on, we sing again to death. And death could not hold you. The veil tore before you. You silenced the boughs of sin and grave. The heavens are roaring. The praise of your glory. And for you are raised to life again. You have, and you have no rival. And you have no equal. And now and forever, God, you reign. And yours is the kingdom. And yours is the glory. And yours is the name above all names. And what a beautiful name it is. And what a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. And what a powerful name it is. And nothing can stand against. And what a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. And what a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. It was my cross you bore so I could live in the freedom you died for. And now my life is yours and I will sing of your goodness forevermore. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. Worthy is your name. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. Worthy is your name. And now my shame is gone. I stand amazed in your love undeniable. Your grace goes on and on and I will sing of your goodness forevermore. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. And worthy is your name. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. And worthy is your name. And worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. And worthy is your name. And worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. And worthy is your name. Jesus, you're worthy of it all. And be exalted now in the heavens as your glory fills this place. You alone deserve our praise. You're the name above all names. Be exalted now in the heavens as your glory fills this place. You alone deserve our praise. You're the name above all names. Be exalted now in the heavens as your glory fills this place. You alone deserve our praise. You're the name above all names. Be exalted now in the heavens as your glory fills this place. You alone deserve our praise. You're the name above all names, yes. You're the name above all names. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. Worthy is your name. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. Worthy is your name. Say worthy. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. Worthy is your name. Worthy is your name, Jesus. You deserve the praise. Worthy is your name. I love you, Lord. For your mercy never fails me. And all my days, I've been held in your hands. From the moment that I wake up until I lay my head, I will sing of the goodness of God. And all my life, you have been faithful. All my life, you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I love your voice. And you have led me through the fire. And in darkest nights, you are close like no other. I've known you as a father. I've known you as a friend. I have lived in the goodness of God. Come on, if he's been good to you, would you sing this today? And all my life, you have been faithful. And all my life, you have been so, so good, yes. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God, yes. Cause your goodness is running after, it's running after me. And your goodness is running after, it's running after me. With my life laid down, I'm surrendered now. I give you everything. Cause your goodness is running after, it's running after me. And your goodness is running after, it's running after me, yes. Cause your goodness is running after, it's running after me. With my life laid down, I'm surrendered now. I give you everything. Cause your goodness is running after, it's running after me. Cause all my life, you have been faithful. And all my life, you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, and I will sing of the goodness of God, yes. Cause all my life, you have been faithful. Yes, you have, Lord. And all my life, you have been so, so good, yes. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God, yeah. I will sing of the goodness of God. Only you, Jesus, I will sing of the goodness of God. And I will sing of the goodness of God. Yes, Lord, we sing of your goodness all of the days of our lives. Lord, you are good to us despite our circumstance, Lord. You prevail, Lord, because of the blood that you shed on the cross for each and every single one of us. That we can stand here today in freedom, in liberty, Lord, because of your goodness. And for that, Lord, we praise you, we glorify you, and we magnify your name. In Jesus' name. Amen. You may be seated.
Well, welcome again. Me again here. Well, I wanna convey a message from the Fandango people who are hosting up tonight. They say, "Mi casa es tu casa." They want you to feel love and welcome, and they want you to be enjoying the snacks and the fruit provided for them. So they hope you feel love and have a warm welcome here. Second, next week, we will be back in our normal location, so just have that down. What else do I have right here? All the ways of giving, just remember, for this time, we'll put the black box right there. If anyone feel led, just to donate or to gift today, there's a black box there. And we also have Venmo and ACH. So you can just click the QR code and then set everything up for your giving. And we're gonna welcome Michael.
Yeah, I think I'm good. Hey, test, test. What? What's that?
Failed the test.
I failed the test. Oh, man. How's everybody? Good to see you. How about this hospitality? Treats on the table? You know what? With you guys being all well fed and all this, I could just talk all night long. I won't do that. I won't do that. Well, hey, let me pray for us and then we'll... Actually, even before I do, I'm just gonna say it again, but to Oscar and everyone who put this on for Fandango, thank you so much. Okay, now let's pray. Father, we love you. Thank you for today and thank you for this time together. And Lord, I just pray for this time together. I pray that you would guide us, that my words would be your words, and that your spirit would be present. I pray that you would bring clarity and excitement and vision to what it is that you are doing with this people. What are you doing with us? And so, Lord, I just pray that you would bless this time in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. So I actually flew in today from Denver, the Remnant Radio guys and I. If I need to, I can go handheld. The Remnant Radio guys and I were filming, we filmed 40 videos about the Nicene Creed in three days. So, yeah. And you guys are gonna get to see that later if you want to. But anyway, so excited about that. So while I was in Denver, I got a phone call from someone who's part of Convergence. It was Jean Reynolds. And her house church probably knows what I'm about to say. So Jean called me. It was about her husband, Dan. And by surprise, suddenly, they realized Dan was gonna need open-heart surgery. And so he has now had the surgery, but she began to describe the symptoms and what he was feeling and being taken to the hospital and all the emotions that went with that. And then she began talking to me about the aftermath. And of course, Dan is just, he's, well, for one, he's feeling really good, by the way. He's, the Lord has been with him. In fact, he's been witnessing to all the doctors and the nurses. But Dan and Jean are especially encouraged. They could not stop talking about their house church. Jean told me, this is all over the phone, I was in Denver, but she told me that this house church has been amazing. They've sent meals, they've sent gift cards, they've sent encouraging notes. They've prayed, they've visited, they've been there for us in every way that somebody could be, and she just reiterated again and again, they have been amazing. So Reynolds House Church, thank you. Guys, that's the church being the church. That's what it is supposed to be like. And it's been on my, so I have a prayer list. I try to pray over every single day. I don't hit it every day, but it has different sections and people that I'm praying for and things. And one of the sections is my dreams and callings in life. And one of them that's been on there for maybe 15 years or more has been that God would use me in some way to contribute to a worldwide church-planting, disciple-making church. Worldwide because the church is for the world. Jesus came for the world. God so loved the world that he gave his one and only Son. Go and make disciples of all nations. And so that's why, but then church-planting, disciple-making church, I think about the story of the Reynolds and what would happen in America, a nation that is one of the loneliest nations. A lonely nation, a nation that's disconnected, that's isolated, that when somebody is going through that, what if they had a house church who loved them? What kind of difference would that make? Or worldwide, what about if in North Africa or Iran, this so-called 1040 window where not very many Christians live? What if a Muslim in Iran had some believers around them that heard about a medical event in their lives and surrounded them and prayed for them and sent them cards and visited them? What if that kind of thing happened? I really believe that the church is Jesus' solution to the brokenness of this world. And Jesus looks out, it says in Matthew chapter nine, "He looks out at the crowd that is harassed and helpless like sheep without a shepherd." That's our world right now. That's our nation. That's Oklahoma City. Harassed and helpless like sheep without a shepherd. And so what was Jesus going to do? Well, he tells his disciples, pray for laborers. He says, "People who love Jesus, this is the solution to the problem." Disciples, that is. Pray for more laborers. And the next thing you know, Matthew 10, he sends the disciples out to be the answer to their own prayer. And so they go out. Jesus sees multiplying disciples as a solution to the world's problems. And when we have churches that are multiplying disciples, well, that's God's solution. And so I wanna be a part of that. And what we're gonna talk about today is being a part of that. So you have this handout that I made you. You know how I am with my handouts. It's kinda long. And we're gonna walk through it, maybe not handle every question tonight, but I'm gonna handle a lot of the questions and we give you guys a chance to handle questions. Format today is just gonna be kind of an FAQ. I put together a lot of the questions I've routinely been asked over the course of the last month or two. And so I'm gonna answer those to the best of my ability. And then also, you guys will have a chance to ask questions. And I just wanna say at the outset, I'm just gonna try my best because this is a super fast-moving target. And show me a little grace. I'm gonna try not to overcommit, like, we're definitely doing this thing, or we're definitely doing that thing. I'm giving you impressions and feelings about where I see us headed. But there will also be some concrete things, such as this question number one. So we said we're gonna be a church. We're on our way to becoming a church. What will be the name of the church? I know this will shock you. Convergence. What do you think of that? Convergence Church OKC, the full-on kind of legal name. You can call it Convergence OKC if you want. You know, I'm Michael David Roundtree. You can call me Mike, Michael. Michael David Roundtree, if you're my mom. So, but you can call it what you want, any variation of those, but Convergence Church. And you know, as this started out, I didn't set out to definitely start a church. I was just taking a step at a time as the Lord instructed me, feed my sheep. And so we started May 8th with this midweek Bible study. And, but we called it Convergence. And Convergence for a long time, and really, Sam wrote a book by this title. But Convergence, it speaks of the intersection of Word and Spirit. And this has been a space in which I've lived for most of my adult Christian life. And God has used me to speak into that space in the church so that we don't have to decide between a church that's all in on the Word, but not so much on the Spirit, or all in on the Spirit, but not so much on the Word. But we can actually turn the volume up to 10 on both, Word and Spirit. And so we called the midweek Bible study Convergence. And then in June, when I announced, hey, this really actually is on its way to becoming a church, I started just praying, well, what are we gonna name it? And was open and was open to, maybe the Lord would call it something different. I don't know. It doesn't have to be called Convergence. But just over the course of time and some conversations with some folks, it just really felt like the Lord was impressing that. And I felt personally like the Lord began impressing some additional biblical tensions. And I think the Bible is full of tensions. And sometimes where we get into trouble is where we try to swing... is where we try to swing the pendulum all the way to one side or the other. That can happen with Word and Spirit, but also some other ways. And so I made a list of tensions that I think will characterize Convergence Church, that we would be Word and Spirit. And that's probably how you'll mainly hear us talk about Convergence. But in addition, we'll be about sermon and sacrament, church and churches, traditional and non-traditional, autonomy and interdependence, centralized and decentralized, speaking of the church of house churches, local and global, community and mission, unity and diversity, leadership and plurality, grace and truth. I see all of these as tensions within the Scripture. And even when you think about God, the one we worship, as being triune, He's one God, three persons. That's a tension. And people who try to settle it and they say, on one side, they try to make them... And I had somebody text message me this week, "Michael, you're teaching people error because you believe in one God and three persons." The guy is a Unitarian. And anyway, sad story, he used to be a Christian. And now he's fallen into heresy. He's tried to settle the tensions, swung the pendulum all the way to one side. We don't wanna do that with the Trinity. We also don't wanna say he's three different gods. No, one God, three persons. Convergence, Convergence, Convergence. I see the power of the Spirit coming out as we maintain these tensions. So what will our vision be? Here's what I wrote in your little handout. "We wanna see Word and Spirit churches accessible to all peoples and in every city." You know, just kinda small vision. We wanna see Word and Spirit churches available to all people and peoples and in every city. I don't get the impression when I read the Gospels that Jesus wants us to have a small vision. Go make disciples of all nations, preach the gospel to all creation, be witnesses in Jerusalem. And then you guys could just kinda settle here in Jerusalem and forget about the rest. No, Jerusalem and Judea and Samaria and the ends of the earth. Not even or, but and, and, and. So Jesus wants us to have a big vision. And I worded it as peoples because I'm not envisioning just like Anglo-suburban church plants and that's it. I wanna reach peoples. When I see, "Go make disciples of all nations," that Greek word, I mean, it's ethnicities is really what it's talking about. It's not just talking about political nations there. I want to reach peoples and in every city. That was actually the Apostle Paul's church-planting strategy. Paul, Acts 16, has a dream of a Macedonian saying, "Come over here and help us." The dream doesn't tell him, "Go to Philippi." But they strategically decide to go to the leading city of that region because if you reach Philippi, you reach Macedonia. If you reach the cities, you reach the regions. Could I envision a day when there's a Convergence NYC or a Convergence DFW or a Convergence LAX or Denver or wherever else? Yes, I could. But I see us reaching peoples and cities. And when I think about the Word and Spirit churches being accessible, it's one of the most common questions that I get asked. People emailing me all the time, like, okay, do you know of a Word and Spirit church in this area? Do you know of one in that area? And usually, the answer is no. It doesn't mean there's not one, I might just not know about it. But I'm just envisioning, even just starting with OKC, what if Afghan refugees had a Word and Spirit church that they could go to? I don't expect it's very highly likely that they would wander into our corporate gatherings just on their own. Now, it could happen that we plant a house church among them and then they start interacting with us and maybe they start coming and it happens like that. But point being, I can see this vision being fulfilled when we talk about church of house churches. I was discipled at one point by a guy named David Watson. And he talked about what he called, he's not the only one that's used this metaphor, but rabbit churches versus elephant churches. And the elephant churches, he described, like elephants, they're big. And he would describe, he said, "Average elephant will have two to six calves over its lifetime and gestation period of twenty months before it can give birth to one." So they're not reproducing a whole lot, but when they do, it's big. On the other hand, he said, "You have rabbits." And your average rabbit, I didn't remember what he said, so I looked this one up, had one to two hundred rabbits called kits in its lifetime. Did you know that that's what they called them? And they could have, they could, their gestation period is not twenty months, but one month, just thirty days. And so we talked about this as the different kinds of churches. Now, David Watson had helped engineer these house church-planting movements around the world. He'd counted no small number of them. And so he described it as, these are sort of like rabid rabbit, not rabid, they don't drool. Rabbit churches, they're multiplying, 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 multiplying. Now, Convergence is actually a little different because it's like, kinda both? I mean, church of house churches, we have the large gathering, we have a small gathering. I don't know, we have a rabbit that reproduces, anyway, vice versa. I'm gonna stop, it's getting weird. But the idea that we could multiply house churches amongst the ethnicities of OKC, and in house churches, it's real simple to get where everyone gets to play, where you can practice the gifts of the Holy Spirit, where you can plant Word and Spirit house churches among them, I can see this vision actually being fulfilled that way. Next question is, are we gonna be a traditional or a non-traditional church? I don't actually love the question because people mean different things by that because, you know, the large gathering seems more traditional. We're gonna have certain ministries. I expect us to have inner healing and deliverance ministry at some point. I expect to expand our prophetic ministry. I expect youth and kids ministries to expand. And so those kinds of things sound more traditional. And at the same time, we're having house churches within the church and that's kind of non-traditional. So I would just think, I don't know, to some of you, it might feel non-traditional and to others of you, it might feel somewhat traditional. And so I would just say it's on the spectrum. I'm gonna continue with weird analogies here, but it is on that spectrum between traditional and non-traditional. Okay, what is preventing us from calling ourselves a church yet? What's preventing us from calling ourselves a church? So last week, I walked through the marks of a true church and kinda spelled those out and, you know, right preaching, they kinda all seemed to settle, just about all, on the right preaching of God's Word and the right practice of the sacraments. And most of them said church discipline. Those were kind of a bare minimum, three. Well, we haven't been practicing the sacraments yet. Some of our house churches have, but even that is still forming. There's a large gathering, we haven't practiced sacraments yet. And we're not really even in a place to practice church discipline. We don't even have members yet and a defined membership. And so that's kinda hard to even think about. And then, and so we have some of these historic reasons that we've not yet called ourselves a church. But there's also, I think, maybe a reason specific to us. And that is, we're working really hard, maybe you've heard me talk about this, working really hard on putting together some bylaws that basically describe, what are your beliefs? What's your kind of philosophy? What's your approach? How are you gonna appoint and dismiss leaders? How do you deal with conflict? How do you deal with abuse? All of those kinds of questions make sense for us to try to answer. And so we're working really hard on that. And I wanna here shortly give you kind of a timeline for what that looks like. But as some of you have heard me talk about this, I've been asked, "Why are bylaws so important?" It's not like, you know, the Apostle Paul was going around like, "Oh, you're not a church yet, you don't have bylaws." You know, what's, excuse me, so why is that a big deal? Well, here's the thing, bylaws don't replace the Scripture. Scripture is ultimate. And you can be a church without bylaws, you can. But I think that if you're gonna be a church of any decent number of people, it is wisdom to have bylaws. The bylaws, again, they don't replace Scripture. They're actually beneath the Scripture. If there was ever a contradiction, I would hope one of you would point it out and say, "Ah, that's actually against the Scripture." The Scripture always trumps. But the bylaws do spell out how we intend to obey the Scripture. I think that's important. So for instance, if somebody had a grievance, how would they go about addressing it? I mean, yes, we have Matthew 18, that's wonderful. But what happens if it's somebody in leadership? What do we do? Well, we have 1 Timothy 5, 19 to 20, it says elders to be rebuked publicly if they're caught in sin. Well, what if the bylaws don't provide a space for that to happen? What do you do? So these kinds of questions and lots more. What's a grievance policy? How do we address conflict? Like, those things really need to be spelled out. And so these are reasons why we wanna have bylaws. And I put this in a church email a couple of weeks ago. But we have brought on somebody who's really an expert in this area. He's one of those people who has seen everything when it comes to church polity, when it comes to the good, the bad, and the ugly. He has seen everything and he has had time over many years to kind of help churches draft bylaws to address the craziest of situations and how do you walk through that? And so he has been an immense help. I've been meeting with him and a few of our board members thus far and charting out kind of a first draft of our bylaws. And so you guys are gonna see that as quickly as we can get through it. Okay, so how will Convergence get feedback about the bylaws? I think that's important. Honestly, just good leaders get feedback. I mean, it's, good leaders don't just like go up on the mountain, pray and come down with a decision. Unless you're Moses, that's your one excuse. But I'm not Moses. And so good leaders gather feedback. And so here is the plan. On September 16th, so you have a date, September 16th, we plan to present the bylaws to you at that time. We will post them online and, or we'll post them in some way. I don't know if it's online yet or we'll figure that out. But we'll post them so that everybody has access to them. And first of all, in that initial presentation, you'll be able to ask all the questions that you have. And then they'll remain accessible to you. And actually, they'll be forever accessible to you. We always intend to have our bylaws public. But over the next couple of weeks after that, it'll be kind of a feedback period. There will be some things we didn't think of, even with our lawyer Christian friend who has seen everything. I mean, it's just gonna happen. And so we actually need you, we invite you, we want you to help us think through everything in the most biblical and practical way possible. But we'll have a couple of weeks for receiving feedback. And after that, we're still ironing this out, but we'll have an adoption process. So we'll make any changes we need to make over the next couple of weeks. And that'll take us, I think, into mid-October. Which brings us to the next question. What is our timeline for official launch as a church? We actually have two things convergencing at the same time, converging. Okay, no one's laughing at my jokes today. I guess I'm, my wife would say that's normal, but, or my kids, anyway. So, yeah, two timelines are converging at the same time. One, if all goes perfectly, we could have bylaws completed by mid-October. And if, you know, if we present them in mid-September, give you guys a couple of weeks to respond, give us a couple of weeks to modify and adapt, and then we adopt like mid to maybe late October, we'll kinda play with that timeline a little bit, but we could be finished by then. Now, it's not mandated and totally required that we have all the bylaws perfectly ironed out when we start, but I'd like to. So that's one thing. But the other thing is, the washes, Scott and Susan. By the way, who is, who's taking part in Scott and Susan's facilitator training? Raise your hand for us. Got a great number of people. I think, isn't it fifty people? Is that the right number? Fifty people taking part in their facilitators' training? And this isn't just like, this isn't just hosting, like facilitators, people who are planning to launch house churches. It's a seven-week-long training. And around mid-October, they're going to be completing that training. And so we see this sort of intersection of timelines between possible finish of the bylaws, and we'll see, it'll take longer if we need to, but possible finish of the bylaws mixed with a lot of house churches being planted. And when we look at this, we're kinda like, we think that we could, we'll just put it like this, we hope to launch in October. We hope to launch in October. And by launch, we'll kinda make a big deal out of it. We'll have, we're actually, we'll have all the people who are leading house churches come up and we'll pray over them and we'll bless them and we'll make it a big celebratory thing. And also, I've kind of alluded to this before, but we're gonna have a sending church. Call it a sending church or a blessing church, I don't really care. It doesn't have to have a name. But Wellspring Church is gonna just sort of bless us in this plant. So Wellspring, yeah. Now, first of all, I don't think that the Bible mandates that a church plant be blessed by some other group of Christians. I think in the Book of Acts, chapter 11, when the persecution broke out, people just started running for their lives and preaching as they went. And as they preached, a church was established in Antioch. It was sort of an accidental church plant. And by the way, that's gonna happen. We're gonna accidentally plant a lot of churches. Some of you guys are gonna become such disciple-making machines. You're gonna suddenly just have like, there's just gonna be churches cropping up. It's really exciting, I'm excited about it. But anyway, Acts chapter 11, accidental church plant. Church in Jerusalem is kinda like, ah, Antioch has a church? What? It's got Greeks in it and Jews too. And they're like hanging out, like, I gotta go check the... They send Barnabas to go up there and Barnabas blesses the church plant. And if Barnabas brought back like a bad word about it, I don't think Jerusalem would have blessed it. And so there was a blessing through Barnabas over the church in Antioch. And then when Paul and Barnabas are sent out in Acts 13, when Paul and Silas are sent out in Acts 15, they're commended to the grace of God, is the language, they're blessed by the church. Interesting side note, we'll get to this when we get to Acts 15, probably in September sometime. But when Barnabas and Paul have their separation, it's often called this like, ah, you know, people just disagree sometime, but Luke is pretty, he's subtle about it, but he's clear. Paul was actually right in this conflict because the church blessed Paul and Silas on their mission. The church did not bless Mark and Barnabas on theirs. So I'll preach on it soon, we'll talk about that more. Point being, I think there's something special in being blessed by some other believers in what we're doing. And Wellspring Church, if you don't know, that's the church that I pastored at for seventeen years. And so they watched me grow up as a little pup in the Lord. Started out as a youth pastor and then became various other kinds of pastors and ultimately the senior pastor there for ten years. And so they're eager and excited to bless what we're doing here with Convergence. And they'll also be part of that launch service. Okay, so what's gonna happen with the board once we become a church? Okay, so I gave the names of the board back in June. And their names are Jonathan Albaron, Alex Bagby, Lindsay Hamilton, Jesus Rodriguez, Alicia Roundtree, and Randy Stark. And so they've been serving in a fantastic way. A lot of work, a whole lot of work has gone into this. And so board members, wherever you are, grateful for you. And, you know, and Alicia is just my wife and partner. I mean, she was putting in like full-time hours, just volunteer through like end of June. I mean, she's been an amazing help as well. So it's been a bit of a sprint. And it's possible that some of these folks that once we plant, might wanna step off. Like, I know my wife is not gonna want to, you know, keep serving in that capacity. It's just a lot. And so there will be some who might wanna step off either, let's say if we plant in October, in October, maybe just before or maybe just after. But thereabouts, some might step off. But I'll also be really interested and the offer will be out to any of them to also become deacons as we move forward. And so I'm imagining our elders having a sort of deacon advisory board that basically, that meets with the elders over, like maybe once a month, has a meeting with the elders. I'm imagining this deacon advisory board consisting of both males and females. But just there to kinda give some counsel and thought about direction, about all the things that churches need to be making decisions about. And so I plan on, so some of these board members might opt to step into that, but it's also been a sprint, so they might opt to step off because they're huffing and puffing and it's tiresome. But anyway, so thank you, thank you, board members. And by the way, that deacon advisory board, if, whatever... And by the way, that deacon advisory board, if, whatever member step off, I'm imagining us kind of electing some other deacons and having some of you be, be part of that and to have some, yeah, congregants just speaking into those decisions that are made. So, so that's what'll happen with the board. Some will become deacons and some will step off. Okay? And then we'll ultimately have elders who are governing the church. 1 Timothy 5:17, the elders are to direct the affairs of the church. Okay, so let's talk about elders a little bit. Will we have elders in every house church or at the corporate level only? The answer is yes and yes. In the long term, the answer is yes and yes. I think for a house church to properly be considered a church, it needs to have elders. And for us to be a church of house churches, there need to be elders. So I haven't really kind of settled on the name, I mean, house church elders, that's kind of a simple one. Haven't really settled on the name of the other ones. But, but yes, I do, and we do envision elders at both levels. And, and just so you know, like this isn't like a new thing to me. I've always wanted a lot of elders, the bigger any church gets. And, and here's why, because Hebrews 13, "I'm accountable before God for how I shepherd the flock." And the fear of God in me, it causes me to tremble at the fact that like, like in some way, I mean, yes, you're responsible for your soul, but in some way I am for over, for shepherding well. And I need a lot of shepherds to do that well, to be honest. And I think we have to maybe get out of the mindset that the shepherd is the corporate policymaker for the church. And yes, there need to be policies and they make decisions, yes. But that's, that's tip, tip, tip of the iceberg. Elders are shepherds. I mean, read 1 Peter, chapter 5. Read Acts 20. This is the job description, shepherd. Do house churches need shepherds? What do you think? Yeah, so if you think about it in terms of corporate board, it's a weird thing to picture a church with lots of elders. But if you think of it as shepherds, man, we need lots of shepherds. It's just like the scripture I mentioned earlier, Matthew, chapter 9. "The harvest is plentiful; the laborers are few." What does Jesus do when he's harassed and helpless and he sees sheep without a shepherd? He disciple-makes. He raises up shepherds and sends them out to shepherd these hurting people. And that's sort of a prototype for what he would ultimately do with the church. And so, yes, I do envision elders in both ways and I envision those house churches. And again, just keep in mind, there's a lot of flex and I might overspeak on a thing or two tonight and have to retract some, but, but I am confident of this one. We will have elders at both levels. And working on just kind of how that works in terms of how are they selected and all that, all those decisions are being, are being made and you're gonna have a chance to look and offer feedback and all of that. I don't know precisely what the relationship is gonna be between house church elders and other thing elders. I don't know. They're, they're gonna work together in some way. And I haven't really spelled out in a draft of the bylaws and I felt kind of proud of myself because the, the Christian lawyer friend called the document remarkable. I just bragged on myself. Let another praise you, Lord. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so, no, I actually am kind of proud of it, to be honest. But I'll just tell you this, our priorities in choosing elders is going to be character, accountability, training, empowerment, and clearly defined roles. And so all of those things are gonna play into what this looks like. And this raises another question, big O question. How can you find or raise up that many biblically qualified elders? How can you do it? You know, Paul warns us in 1 Timothy 5:22, "Don't lay hands on anyone too hastily lest you share in the sins of others." In other words, if you too quickly appoint elders and they're bad elders and they're spreading sin in the congregation or sinning against the congregation, like then it's kind of blood on your hands. Like, don't, don't do that, Paul says. Don't lay hands on them, don't appoint them too hastily, he says. "Let there be time to evaluate their conduct. Are they meeting the standards of Titus 1 and 1 Timothy 3 and 1 Peter 5 and Acts 20? Are they living this kind of exemplary life?" And so, you know, hearing that, you might think, ah, yes, we need years and years and years to find such godly people. But that's actually not how the Apostle Paul operated. Acts 14:23, now first of all, Acts 14:23, he had Titus 1:5, both indicate that Paul planted churches before he established elders. So he wasn't like, man, I don't know, we're not gonna call it a church until we have all our ducks in a row. No, he actually planted churches and then came back sometime later and appointed elders. But, but here's the interesting thing, and I put a little chart in here, just the timeline of Paul's first missionary journey. And, and what you find is that, so Paul, first ministry journey, he goes around, his last place is in, his last stop is in this place called Lystra. It's this really weird and fascinating story and blasphemous and terrible story too. They're performing these incredible miracles and, and great preaching and all of this. And the Gentiles come out and start trying to worship Paul and Barnabas and offer them sacrifices. And don't worship us, we're not gods. And they thought Paul was Hermes and Barnabas was Zeus. Kind of a wild story. Well, I'll tell you what else is wild. About five or six months later, Paul is back in Lystra appointing elders out of that pagan, formerly pagan area. So a church is planted and it, so it's the last place he goes, then he circles back. It's the first place he goes back to. And a short time later, he's already raising up elders within that house church. And by the time he works his way back through Iconium and through Passidian Antioch, it's been longer, maybe a year and some change or a little less than a year. But it seems like Paul's pattern was, he expected that if he was able to lead a small group of people, a house church of, call it 50 people, that if he was able to lead a house church of 50 people to faith in Jesus, he could leave and he could come back. And within a year's time, he expected to have biblically qualified elders. And so I, I think the biblical model is a good one to follow. That's my opinion. I bet y'all agree. And so what I would say is, yes, we're gonna call these house churches. We're not going to immediately appoint elders. We're gonna let things play out. We're raising up facilitators. And, and so the facilitators will kind of just guide the time together. And then I'll be here and the washes will be here and others to help coach and guide and train and give feedback and, and contribute and give support and shepherding and all of those things to support you in the midst of this. But we, we plan to raise up facilitators. And within a year's time, we expect there to be biblically qualified elders. That I think that by the time that decision's made, the people in the house church are gonna be saying, of course, that's who should be the elder or the elders in this house church. I think, I think that's probably how Paul did it, that it, there was a consensus, would be my, my guess. Now, they went and they appointed elders, but when they looked at those biblical qualifications, I can guarantee you, if someone was a total hypocrite and Paul appointed them as an elder, they'd be like, Paul, don't appoint him. That's bad. You know, so, so anyway, but big picture is, we're going, we're gonna plant house churches even before we have official elders in them. They'll be called facilitators and over the course of, within a year's time, it could be, I don't know, I'm not even gonna give a time. But within a year's time, I would expect that we have qualified elders in each. And, you know, I was talking to somebody who had some experience in, in house churches a couple of weeks ago, and he gave me this quote as he was talking about his experience, both leading house churches and just working with others in house churches. He says, here's, here's the thing, talking about leadership. He said, responsibility is fertilizer. When you actually entrust leadership to the people, this is a big, like, this is who I am. I love, I love to empower others. I don't need to be like center stage guy doing all this, like, I want to empower you. There's so much power in the pews. And, and when you are looking to people to be elders and deacons within their, their own house churches and there is a sense of responsibility that comes with that. I use this analogy back in June, like when you become a parent for the first time, you're like, what do I do with this thing? But like becoming a parent makes you instantly more responsible and more mature. It, it does. I'm not saying like you're immature if you don't have kids. I'm not saying that. But there is something maturing about caring for a child. Well, there's also something maturing, sanctifying, that makes you, it, it just, it's fertilizer. It helps you grow. And Paul saw that, saw this, and I think that's part of why his churches often flourished. Doesn't mean he didn't have problems. He did, read his letters. The responsibility is fertilizer. And, and I see, I look out in this room, I see leaders. I don't just see people to come sit in chairs and listen to the almighty Michael talk about the Bible. I see leaders. I see laborers in the harvest. I see church planters. I see people being the church out into the community. That's what I see. And so that's gonna be the process. How do you ensure that house church elders are adequately trained and resourced to handle complicated matters such as mental illness, demonization, and divorce? So much that we could say about these kinds of things, but I think this is part of the beauty of being a church of house churches. If it was an isolated house church that some random person just started, I don't know that they would be equipped to handle those things. But we do have leaders here who have handled all of those things. I've handled all of those things. Sam has, others have. And so with a church of house churches, no leader is an island and no church is an island. We're actually here to support one another. And I think we can, we can support you and coach you and train you and resource you and step in wherever is needed in those areas. If you give house churches and their leaders too much independence, how do you prevent heresy? Again, I think the, the elders and staff are gonna be able to help in that. We're, we're gonna be in relationship with one another. We're gonna be interdependent with one another. I think the teaching in the large gathering will help guide and steer where we are doctrinally. In addition, the house churches, I mean, we'll bless house churches that don't want to be part of Convergence OKC. Sometimes you guys are gonna plant house churches and they're like, I don't, I don't want to go on Wednesday night. And, and we'll bless that. And that'll just be a house church and they can go do their thing. And others will be like, I love coming on Wednesday night. We'll be like, come on in. I mean, hey, just bless, multiplication is wonderful. I love it. It's great, let's do it. However it happens. But, but if somebody does want to be their house church to be part of Convergence OKC, well, clearly, they're gonna need to align doctrinally with Convergence OKC. And so there will be an agreement and, and members of the congregation as well as other elders, and we'll have a lot of other elders, will all play a key role in keeping everyone accountable. So if, you know, we ever heard of a bad doctrine that was being taught, it would certainly be addressed. All that would be spelled out in the bylaws. What's the process there? And, and there'd be accountability built in all the way around. And, and the other thing I would say, just having a decent amount of experience with overseas ministry and Scott and Susan, I, I don't know if you guys are aware of the extensiveness of their experience with house churches, but, but when they were in India for 20 years, they, they were planting house churches that were planting house churches that were planting house churches, et cetera. Interestingly enough, one of the things that they discovered was that, is they were planting these individual and maybe sometimes more isolated house churches, they saw, you know what? There's real value in us also coming together as a bigger group too, so we can kind of feed into one another and resource one another. This church of house churches thing is not like this entirely foreign thing to them. They've, they've done something, not, not precisely the same, but kind of a similar idea. Well, one of the things that Scott was telling me about actually sent me this, this video and, and the guy was talking about, he's, they have these church planting movements. And I don't know how much you've read about in the missions world what's taken place. But while Christianity in the West is declining, 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 the global center of Christianity has gone south. And there, there is a massive revival taking place in Iran and China and all these hard-to-reach places. I mean, revival fires are spreading like crazy. And they, the term that missiologists give it, people who are studiers of missions, they call them church planting movements. Well, this particular guy on the video was talking about, he said, in all these house churches that we've seen planted, and it, and it must be in the many thousands conservatively, in all these churches, we had a third party come in and do an investigation on, because we're always asked, what about heresy? Because if you're going so fast, so fast, so fast and churches are multiplying, then is the quality going down? And this third party came in and looked at all of these different house churches and they didn't find in multiple church planting movements, they found zero heresies. The worst thing they found was that a particular church or a few churches, they were waiting too long to baptize converts, making them wait a year. It's not heresy. In fact, church history, you can kind of see that. But I, I think it's better to be baptized quicker, but it's not a heresy. And so, and so I think that, I just think interdependence, it's what you see in how they did church in the New Testament. And I think it's a real safeguard in this area. I'm gonna zoom down a little bit. I've been asked this quite a bit. What's Convergence view on women in the church? Okay, so, first of all, so for those of you who are familiar with the term, I am complementarian. Okay? Complementarian, if you're not familiar with the term. It, it means that, I mean, first of all, male, female, different, quite obviously. Masculine, feminine, different, quite obviously. Genesis, chapter 1, it presents Adam and Eve in creation, both bearing the image of God. So both masculinity and femininity display the beauty and the glory of God. And if we have all one or if we have all the other, we have an incomplete picture of what God is like. And so we both contribute to that together. So if Genesis 1 speaks of our total equality in essence before God, Genesis, chapter 2 begins to speak into the different roles between Adam and Eve. And, and those roles are complementary. And what that means, you just think like pieces of a puzzle. They, they fit together to create a cohesive whole. And, and so when Paul is talking about eldership in the church and 1 Timothy 3, but leading up to that, even in 1 Timothy, chapter 2, and 1 Timothy 2, that's kind of like the go-to passage that people use for like male headship in the church. Ephesians 5 would be the go-to for male headship in the home. But what I think is interesting about 1 Timothy, chapter 2, is that when Paul wants to say, hey, men are to be the heads of the church, he looks to the first marriage, Adam and Eve. And he says that Adam was created first in Genesis 2, which he sees in that something implying headship. Someday we can teach more thoroughly on this. But here's where I want to go with that. The church is the household of God. And so the way God designed it to be in a marriage is something like the way God designed it to be in the church. And the reason I think that's important, maybe I can just use my own personal experience in marriage for this, and I bet those married people could probably testify the same. I think I have a pretty good marriage, been married 20 years and are happy together. If you ask any of my four kids, they would say, yeah, dad's, dad's the head of the household. Technically, yeah. They would say that. I mean, technically, like I am. At the same time, when I look at how my household operates, has there ever been a decision of even medium significance that I haven't deeply and thoroughly processed with my wife? The answer is no. I have processed everything with her. Certainly of significant decisions. Buy a stick of gum, whatever, got a leeway. In fact, actually, I'll say this, the one area where actually Alicia is the head of the household is the thermostat. That is the one area. I just, I just let, I just let her rule over that right there. But, no, but here's the thing. We, in our marriage, it's not as though like I'm head and then I have four kids and Alicia like my children, no. And my concern about expressions of male headship sometimes is that the woman is put on the level of the child. And when you look at the scripture, it says, honor your father and mother to the children. And so both mother and father are leaders in the home. Is man the head of the household? I do believe that he is. And yet the mother's a leader in the home as well. There, there is like this partnership that's taking place. And so in my marriage, I've never made, I don't, I can't think of a time that I've made a decision of even, of medium or more significance that Alicia was opposed to. We've found unity on our decision-making. She has leadership and she has voice, and yet I am the head of the household. And I think that analogy, given that Paul points to the first marriage to make a parallel for the church, I think that analogy holds up in the church. Paul does, I believe, appoint male elders, but I don't think that we want the equivalent of single dads leading the church. We need mothers and fathers. And, and so I think that the equivalent would be, we need female leaders in the church and we need females with voices at the highest level. And we need females with voices at the highest levels in the church. And I don't think that it's an accident that in Proverbs eight, wisdom is personified as a woman. My wife has a spidey sense. And I, I actually, I think I could make a biblical case that, that women have a certain discernment. And I think it would be unwise and in fact, not true complementarian to have all the highest level conversations away from women. I don't think that makes sense. If I'm truly complementarian, I believe that women complement my leadership. And, and so I, I want women speaking into direction and vision at the highest levels. I also want, want women leaders in the church and not just over, say, children. But, but I want women leaders throughout the church. And, and I think that here, here's kind of a summary I wrote here at the bottom of it. I said, in some convergence will affirm male headship in the church and the home, while at the same time championing the female's leadership and voice. Consider this another convergence of biblical tension worth maintaining. And I chose the word championing there on purpose because I think that it can happen sometimes that male elderships allow women to do certain things. It, it becomes sort of this like, I permit you to do like, I, I don't know. I, I, it feels a little bit like treating women like they're the children. And I really think complementarianism in its best expression says, you, I need you and your wisdom and your voice to complement what the males are bringing into the church. We need the full picture to show the beauty and glory of God to the world. So what is our position? Yes, complementarian. Yes, we believe in male headship. However, it's, it's also, I, I believe, championing females' leadership and voice at the highest levels. And I mentioned earlier, like one practical way that I was envisioning that was that, that deacon advisory board that meets with the elders. Again, I'm, it would have women on it. I, I want women speaking into elders' decisions. And the other thing is I don't want them to just be elders' wives. I, I don't think like elders' wife is not like an office in the church. And, and, and so I, I think God raises up women throughout the church. You've got Phoebe and others in the New Testament. And so I, I think that I want to champion those voices. Okay. If you have questions about that later, we can talk some more. How are we doing financially? We've been very blessed. You guys have been awesome. Thank you so much. We're establishing, we're trying to, it's hard to really keep in mind, we've only been around for a few months. So what's a monthly giving pattern? That's hard to discern right now. But basically, we're being very conservative right now, considering what's come in and what's going out. We're being as conservative as we can be. And, and we're working on an in-depth budget to kind of forecast. But just so you guys know, we have on our board, an IRS CPA, it's a lot of letters, nonprofit CPA, a CFO, and a banker. So some people who really care about doing things legally, ethically, responsibly, and with good stewardship. Okay, in a church of house churches, where should the tithe and author, offering be directed? This is where I need a little grace as we're trying to figure all of this out. What does it look like to be a church of house churches? And what do you do with finances? I do envision that in the long-term, house churches having some oversight of finances over their house churches. What that looks like, gosh, that's confusing. There's so many things to think about there legally, accounting-wise, best practices, all of that. And so that, that's hard. And, and I just write, write here, whatever we decide will meet all the highest standards of law, ethics, and scripture. But I think for them to be truly house church, I do want to give them voice in like, what local missions they might want to donate to or what benevolence needs within their house church they might want to give to, those kinds of things. What becomes especially hard is if we don't have elders for eight months or a year. So like, who do you entrust that decision to? So I think since we don't have elders yet, and as there's lots of complicated ironing out on this, and please allow grace, I hope I don't say anything wrong. But the, the simplest answer is to give your tithe to Convergence OKC. And then, and we can very easily provide that tax-free deduction. But, which is the most important thing, but it does matter. And then I would say that if you have benevolence needs within your house church, then let us know because we, we want to help with that. So that's where we're at right now. But this could change over the course of the next year in terms of precisely what that balance looks like. It is hard to know. What does that look like in an interdependent family of house churches? So we'll see and we'll welcome your input along the way. Okay. Are we going to be a Sunday church or a Wednesday church? I mean, the big answer is, is we don't know. We actually are open to staying on Wednesday nights. We are also open to being a Sunday morning church. I don't, and, and by being a Sunday morning church, I'm talking about for the large gathering. No matter how you slice it, we're going to be a two gatherings a week church. I don't think that I can responsibly before God shepherd people who are just coming to listen to me speak once a week. Like I, I just can't. If people aren't in house churches, I, I can't. So, so to be part of Convergence OKC would mean you do need to be a part of a house church. Now, right now, that's all kind of forming, but I'm just kind of projecting for you. That's where, that's where it's headed. And, and yes, I, I am in a house church. I want to lead by example. And I really love my house church. It's great. House churches right now, most of them are meeting on, on Sundays, but they don't have to. Could we switch it around? Like, and I'll just say this, the model of church of house churches does not hinge on the day of the week. It, it doesn't. And so we're just going to get your feedback. We're just going to seek the Lord and we're going to see what he does. And if he wants to change it to Sunday, praise God, we'll make it Sunday. And I know a lot of people will love that. And if he wants to keep it Wednesday, I, I also know a lot of people who, who would love that. And so we're just going to seek the Lord together and I would really love your feedback. Lastly, youth and kids, we've been trying some things and we're going to keep trying some things. We want to expand youth and kids and, and what we do for that is going to take some time. Please have a little patience and grace for us. But we could really use, really use volunteers. So if you're interested in that, you can email the address there. Okay. So how'd I do? Seven forty-nine. I did good. I did good. I just, I'm into praising myself, so. Okay. So let's ask some questions. Jesus, are you standing because you're asking questions or because you're helping us do the question thing? Jesus is going to help us. If you have a question, raise your hand for me. Okay. If you have a question, he says you have to come, come here, listen to Jesus. So just make a line by Jesus and, and he'll hook you up.
Said about what would we, what would you do if you don't have a voice with the elders that are created? And so that's, I think what all of us are, have struggled with is that we didn't have a voice and our only voice was to, to leave. And so I would like to see that really soon, how we will have a voice and still not be a populist church, but at the same time, have a voice with the elders. I think that's real important.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that faithfulness to the scripture would require that. And I know a lot of people's eyes are going to be on that. It's been thought through very thoroughly and, and so very important to us.
I'll keep this as a simpler question. Nothing like comparing Hebrews and Song of Solomon or anything like that. So bylaws, talked about bylaws being very important for Convergence OKC. Bylaws for house churches? Any thoughts on that or just curious?
Well, we would have bylaws for Convergence OKC as a church of house churches. I mean, great question. Thank you, Kyle. As a church of house churches. So it would be inclusive of that. And so house churches that are becoming part of Convergence OKC, they would either be agreeing to those bylaws or not. And so I think it would have, it would probably be sufficient for house churches. However, I mean, I, I'm confident that it would. However, there, it's likely also that house churches might say, hey, there are a couple of things that just for our house church, we would kind of like to operate this particular way or do that, you know? And they might make your own little addendums for yourselves. That's cool. That's cool. Yeah.
I'm going to kind of build on something that was just asked. So transparency and accountability, how are you going to build that in purposefully and specifically from the beginning?
Yeah, absolutely. Transparency and accountability, how are we going to build that in from the beginning? First of all, you know, as I've been talking about this bylaws process, I've been saying, we're going to offer feedback or we're going to welcome your feedback. So, so that's for starters. In addition, the bylaws will remain public. And, and so we also have measures that will be in place so that the bylaws are not like, hey, you agreed to this, but now we're secretly changing it. And so that will actually not be possible. They'll be public. And there's some kind of protective hoops to jump through on the transparency and accountability side with the congregation that would prevent that sort of activity. And there, there are a number of things, Mike, that, I, I can think of several of them. I'm a little hesitant to say too much because I don't want to say this is what we are definitely going to do. In that note, it, it relates to kind of how certain elder meetings operate and what kind of visibility people have. And, and you know, there is a place for confidentiality and there is a place for transparency. And how do you, how do you kind of balance all that? So I, so I think for starters, you've seen it with the bylaws. But in addition, you're going to see it in how the governance structure operates in giving people visibility into certain things as well as the policies, grievance policy, whistleblower policy that are set in, that are set in place for people to respond if there are any concerns.
Hey, Michael.
Hey.
Longtime listener, first time caller. So this is more a.
He makes me laugh every time he talks. All right.
This is more a clarification question. Cause you had mentioned about facilitators eventually becoming elders. So is that like a growth track sort of thing? Cause the reason I ask is, and I mean no offense to anyone who has decided to become a facilitator, but I would think not every facilitator necessarily meets the qualifications of an elder. So, and if that's stuff that you're still figuring out.
I agree. No, I can speak into that. So the growth track is not for every facilitator to become an elder. It is for elders to be raised up within the church. I think it will sometimes be the facilitator. And I think it will sometimes not be the facilitator. And that'll just be determined house church to house church, person to person. But you're absolutely right. Not every, not every facilitator should become an elder for sure. Yeah.
So you said that there would be an elder at every house church. So would there be an elder?
Would there be an elder at every house church, even if they weren't the facilitator then ultimately?
Ultimately, yes. Ultimately, we would want, I mean plurality, I would say a minimum of two, ideally three or more elders in each house church. And I would want ultimately deacons too. And in my mind is to have house churches choose their own deacons. Deacon means servant. That's what it means. Do you need servants in your house church? So, so yeah, I would, yes, I would. Okay. Looks like Mitch is trying to go next, but Charlie, the magic worker of microphones.
No magic.
No, no magic.
Hey, Michael. We talk about house churches, planting more house churches and kind of being the rabbit. Do we have an idea of how big we're wanting each house church to be? Coming from a place of, it's kind of annoying when you are a part of a community group or a small group and it keeps splitting and splitting that you don't end up making any long-term friends. So I don't know. Did you have any thoughts on that size and longevity?
Absolutely. Cause I see like, even in that, that list of tension, one of them was community and mission. And, and I find that if you're all on the mission side, but not on the community side, you end up feeling like a robot and a machine. If you're all on the community side, but not on the mission side, it kind of becomes a country club. And so you actually, you want those two together, community and mission. And, and I would say, in terms of size, it's probably going to be, it's going to be determined by the size of the house, the leader and kind of what they, or leaders and what they kind of perceive the needs to be. But I would just envision it being a very pastoral situation, not a one size fits all. Because we, we have to understand we are shepherding people's hearts. And so you don't want to rip people's hearts out every 15 minutes because new things are getting planted. On the other hand, there can be some like legit times where it's like, let's plant this other church or somebody's going to go out like. So I just think it's going to be different each time. And we'll try to pastor it in a sort of tailored way to each, each community, keeping those two tensions in mind. Yeah. Carrie, were you wanting to ask a question? Randy is here with his friend Carrie. So Randy was the CFO I was talking about. He's on the board and has been immensely helpful. Okay. Yes. Moral support. Okay, Carrie, what do you have?
So we, we've had a, a question already about just not having a voice when kind of everything went down. So I don't know why I'm getting upset. So. Okay. So. I just, I want to offer to organize a meeting, like a public meeting. If anybody feels like that that wasn't handled properly or that we didn't explore Matthew 18 properly. And because we were told we could not meet. And I'm not sure that was biblical. I think that we collectively, I'm saying we collectively, believed a false teaching at that time and we submitted to that. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of more publicly or biblically close out that chapter? And if there's anybody who wants to explore that of things that we might be able to do collectively to hold those accountable that need to be held accountable or to do something in a more public manner to, to address that. That's part of a public record and just in a public way that I feel like we are commanded to do, but we weren't allowed to. So I don't know if that makes sense.
Yes. Okay. So I hear you and thank you for sharing. Y'all couldn't hear her? Okay. So I'll summarize it. She said that a number of people in their experience at the last church felt like they were not able to follow through the biblical commands of Matthew 18 and First Timothy five, which involve a public rebuke for sin of elders. And she felt like some, maybe, and I think maybe you were including yourself in that, that there was kind of a submissiveness to that and felt like the only thing they could do was go. But Carrie proposed a meeting that was public to process that. And how to, I think what your real concern, Carrie, is how do I obey the Bible when it tells me to rebuke elders and sin? I, I think that's what you're saying. And you're saying that you're interested in holding some kind of public forum to discuss that.
Just be able to talk about it in a public setting without it being convergence or y'all, you know, you're moving ahead with beautiful vision and who, you know? But I, there might be something that we need to do to close out that chapter in a more biblical way when we were not allowed to maybe do it in a biblical way. But if there's anybody that wants to meet, I will organize that. So just let me know and we'll set it up. But it might be a good discussion and to see what's possible that we could do.
Yeah. Okay. Well, Carrie, I know it took some courage to come up and even say that. I know that there, there's a lot of emotion and just hurt and all of that. And, and I, and so I commend you for your courage and thank you for sharing. And I just also just honor you for your heart that is really ultimately, how do I obey God? What does it look like for me to obey God? And sometimes that's a hard thing to discern. And, and so I bless you in holding that meeting. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Carrie.
Once you appoint somebody as an elder, are they going to be an elder for life, and circle, cycle off and on?
Uh, no. Well... Term limits! Yeah. I heard somebody say that. No, not for life. We plan to have term limits. Yeah. Good question. I love this. Y'all are like, milking out as much of the bylaws as you can before I release them. I'm joking. Actually, it helps me know what's important to you guys, but yes, that is the plan.
For the bylaws meeting, is there going to be an actual physical meeting, or is it just online?
It'll be in person. Yeah. It will be in person. The, the online part, in some way or another, is the dissemination of a first draft of bylaws that you guys will poke holes in and make better. Randy has a real question. All right. What you got?
At that public meeting, will the attorney be there that helped you with the bylaws?
Uh, yes. The attorney who's helping with the bylaws will be there. Some questions are just statements. The attorney will be there. So, yes, thank you, Randy. I should have said that. Cool. All right. Diane? We'll take a couple more, maybe these two. We'll see how long these ones go.
Will there be, ooh. Will there be elders dropping in on other elders, like house churches and things, to, of course, keep track of what's being taught, what's being said, things like that? Or will it be higher-ups that are, I guess, like, maybe you, or two or three? Will there be jumping to check on house churches, to make sure what they're teaching is biblically correct, and to, of course, keep down on heresy?
Yeah. You got to stamp that heresy out. Yeah. So, I mean, I would say Scott and Susan will probably be involved in quite a number of house churches. I expect they're going to raise up leaders to help them in even that level of oversight. So definitely, there will be visibility into house churches. But, you know, will, in terms of just how all the elders, I want to kind of stay at a high level. I don't fully know how they're all going to interact. I am imagining, like, the phrase in my mind is, "A full council of elders," that includes those over house churches as well as others. And there's going to be certain times for coming together, and I guess I'll leak this out. I do envision, Mike, that those full council of elder meetings being public as well, that people could see. So, anyway, so there, the full, the way that people, that house churches will be accountable, it will be one within the church. Matthew 18, it's actually, tell it, like, the rebuke, as well as 1 Timothy 5, there's a rebuke before the church. Okay? So, problems can be addressed within the local church, but it can also be addressed as, through a full council of elders, in some way or another, and we're still ironing that out. Okay. Hey, well, maybe you have a follow-up. You might have a follow-up with just me, because I want to honor, honor people's times. But we'll, we'll take Brian and Diane. Okay.
I'm just wondering, in the same way that you're kind of, in the same way that you're planning and working together for the adult program, are, are you working with pulling people together to kind of brainstorm how to help support the movement forward for the children?
Yes, we are. I mean, we, we meet, our board talks every week about youth and children, and how we can better serve them. And by the way, Taylor McLaughlin, are you here? Is Taylor here? She is amazing.
So that's happening now?
It is. Oh, yeah. We, our board discusses it every week. In addition, there's a sort of volunteer admin team that's discussing that every week. And so, those things, but yeah, Taylor, if you're watching, she's doing an incredible job with our kids, and she's just lights out.
Well, I figured it, but I hadn't heard about it, so.
Yeah. Yeah. So, youth and kids still developing right now, but we're working hard at it. All right.
Hey, Michael David, how are you? What's your, obviously, plans change, and how many people are coming to this changes things, but what's your value on purchasing property and kind of collecting overhead versus continuing to lease, or even seek out, you know, donations of space and all that kind of stuff for the future?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I would say, my highest value in my heart is mission, global mission. I want to be able to, like, to donate a lot of money as a church, globally and locally. I do. I, I don't want to discount the possibility that there could be a purchase someday, or, you know, those kinds of things. Those are the, the kinds of big decisions that we're, gosh, again, I'm trying not to say too much, but congregation visibility and accountability will be a, a big thing on. Okay? I'll say that much. But, you know, in the New Testament, they had the temple courts for a time, they had Solomon's Colonnade, they used the lecture hall of Tyrrannus in Acts 20 or 19, anyway. So there is, like, we will need a place to meet. I do like renting right now. It's cheaper. I don't have to think about all the, like, giant overhead of buildings. I like that. So, I would say, highest value missions. Don't want to discount that facility decisions do have to be made. Congregation visibility, accountability will all be a major part of that, and you'll hear more on September 16th. Yeah. Okay. All right. I'll let you ask the follow-up, but this will be the last question.
So, how big or small does the difference in, like, what's being taught at house churches have to be to, like, one, declare it as, like, heresy? Two, second part of that question is, who would we be able to report things like that to, for a vetting process or something like that, to go through, to verify if it is heresy?
Yeah. Okay. So, the first, so your follow-up question was two. It's like an A and a B. So, the, okay, so one was, how do we vet it? And what, help me out, Jesus. The first part was? Yeah. So I would say, first, in a house church of 25 people, I would expect one or two is probably going to notice that, that a heresy is being taught. Heresy is a violation of first-tier doctrine, that which makes you Christian. If somebody disagrees about spiritual gifts or the age of the earth, that's not heresy. And so, and so heresy is first-tier. It's the Trinity, justification by grace through faith, salvation in Christ alone, the authority of scripture, et cetera. These are first-tier doctrines. And so, if somebody was teaching against those things, one, interdependence, relationship, I think we would find out quickly, just the way we have this designed. But in addition, someone in the house church, there would be a process spelled out for how they address it from within, and there would also be support from without, from the full council of elders. Okay? All right. So, guys, thanks for coming out this evening. Really appreciate you. I'm excited to do church with you. I'm excited to be in community with you and on mission with you. And I'm excited to see what God does as people are empowered, priesthood of all believers, as people are empowered to extend the kingdom of God, home to home and disciple to disciple. So with that said, let me pray. Father, we love you, and we bless you. Father, thank you for this time together. Lord, I pray that you would continue bringing clarity to this as it is forming, and help us to be holy before you, transparent, accountable, bearing the fruits of the Spirit, wisely shepherding, wisely stewarding. Lord, make us a holy church that pleases you, as the church in Smyrna and Philadelphia did in Revelation 2 and 3. May we be like that, and may you count us faithful, in Jesus' name. Amen.